Members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, June 11, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider our motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Heretic?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall? Mr. Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright? Mr. Chandler?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As we start your public work session this evening, we wanted to give you an update on some of the staff work that's been dealing with the Washington Street Pump Station in the downtown area. I'd like to recognize Mr. Foster, our Public Utilities Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor, members of council, just wanted to give you a brief update on the pump station at the corner of Washington County Streets. If you recall, I was here in February at your work session, giving you an update on the downtown master plan for the utilities in downtown. And this pump station is a part of that project. It's our first phase where we are building a new sanitary sewer pump station. It's at the corner of Washington and County Streets. You've probably seen the construction that has started. The contract was awarded to Shaw Construction. They're the general contractor. And Draper Aiden Associates is doing project management and resident inspection on that project. If you recall, when we did Prentice Park, we did a newsletter notifying and keeping folks updated on that project. And we're doing the same thing for this project. And you should have received electronically from Ms. Woodson the first newsletter that was sent out to the residents, informing them of the project and keeping them aware of the updates and where we are. The project itself on the pump station is scheduled to run through July of next year. So about another year from now is when we expect that project to be complete. And then once that, once the construction is complete, the remainder of that parcel will be public green space, a little passive park with benches and landscaping. And we coordinated that with the Civic League and the neighborhood over there in that part of town. And so they are well pleased with how the final project's going to turn out as far as having that public space over there. The second part of this that will be forthcoming, just to give you a preview, the pump station is the first part of Phase One. The second part of Phase One is we'll be replacing all of the water and sewer lines, as well as storm drain lines, in a six, roughly 16-block area roughly from Washington Street all the way over to Crawford, and then from High Street down to South Street. So we won't actually be in High Street. We'll be approaching those intersections, if you recall, quite a, well, I say quite a few years ago, but when High Street was redeveloped, the water and sewer infrastructure along High Street was redone at that time. So we'll be approaching some of the intersections, but not actually in High Street. That part of the project's in final design. Expect to go out to bid by the end of September. And once we get started on construction for that part, we anticipate doing a block-by-block construction where we will limit the activity to hopefully a single block or maybe a two-block area at a time, have all the work done, inconvenience folks one time, and then move on to the next block. And so that's our plan of attack. And we'll be, this summer, here in the next few weeks, starting our public information campaign for that part of the project and letting the, getting in touch with the business community, as well as the residents that live in those areas, make them aware, get any input from them as far as when we're coming through for construction. But all of that, again, is part of the Phase One for the downtown master utility plan, which is the renewal of all of our infrastructure downtown so we can continue to serve the, our existing customers, but also prepare for all of the redevelopment initiatives that are on council's agenda. So, and I guess the last piece is the public utility bonds that we just sold earlier this year. That's what's paying for this project. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
What was the price tag?
The pump station was 2.1 million. Brown was 2,97,000. And then the estimate for the Part B, the line work, is around 10 million.
Well, we've got you. You want to mention something a little bit in terms of the latest of HRSD?
Sure, I can. If you recall, the, at your April 10 meeting, you passed a resolution where HRSD were, is looking with the, in conjunction with the Planning District Commission and all the regions, localities in the service area, the possibility of feasibility, cost effectiveness, of further consolidating sanitary sewer assets. And so that project has just gotten started in the sense of we've, the, HRSD is funding that study. It's being coordinated through the Planning District Commission. And the RFP for consultant has gone out. Those proposals are due next week. And then we'll hopefully have somebody finish that process and have selected a consultant next month. Our role in the process, as we serve on the Steering Committee, I'm representing the city on the Steering Committee along with my counterparts throughout the region. And then we, of course, will be providing the data necessary for the consultant to consider, as are all the other localities. And we expect about a 12-month process for that study to be complete. And just again, as a reminder, we've agreed to participate in the study. We are under no obligation to do anything once those results come back, as far as whatever recommendations they might have. We may want to pursue them. They may be in our best interest, but we are not, at this point, obligated to do anything until we see the results of the study and able to consider any recommendations that may be forthcoming. And we are requesting a, through HRSD, a deferral of some of the consent order deadlines that are upcoming so we can complete this process and not have to continue with some of the deadlines we have for our sanitary sewer overflow consent requirement. And we are waiting to hear back from them. That request has been made, but we have not heard a response yet.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Okay. Councilmembers, the next item we have is a presentation on red light camera technology. I'd like to recognize Chief Hargis and a guest that we have with us, Mr. David Samuel. Everyone is probably familiar with red light camera technology. In Virginia, of course, it's something that we've had at one time and had permission, then we didn't have it, and we have it in some instances again. So we wanted to take an opportunity to bring you up to speed. In terms of the technology, I'd like to recognize Chief Hargis first.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. As a result of previous chief's report, I was requested to get some information as far as red light traffic enforcement cameras go. To coincide with that request, as well as going along with our strategic plan, public safety and reducing traffic crashes and technology advancement, took a look at the surrounding communities, Virginia Beach, Newport News, Chesapeake, all use Red Flex enforcement cameras. Reached out to Mr. Samuel. He did a presentation for the executive staff from about a month and a half ago. And from there, we wanted to bring him before council to have a presentation and be able to answer any of your questions afterwards. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Dave Samuels from Red Flex.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak to you. I want to thank Mr. Chandler and the chief for giving the opportunity to come in and talk about red light safety cameras. I'm sure you've all either seen them or you've heard in the news about red light safety cameras and what they do and how they work. I'm here to give you a brief presentation. I'll answer any questions you have. There's a lot of misconceptions about how the cameras operate. I'll tell you first that in order for a state to have a red light camera program, it has to be authorized by the state legislature. So there are about 25, 26 states that enable it, and Virginia has enabled photo enforcement since about 2007. So of all the states in the United States, Virginia's program is probably the most mild program. So I'll tell you right now that the legislation is set up so that every cities, every city must pass an ordinance. And the ordinance has to be the same. So the ordinance is basically like this. If you run a red light and it's photo enforced in the city of Virginia and you're caught on a red light camera, you're going to get a fine. You're going to get a civil ticket in the mail of $50. It doesn't get reported to your insurance. It doesn't get reported to the DMV. It's a civil penalty, like a parking ticket. You pay it. You mail in your $50, and it's over with. It's done. In Virginia, the yellow light timing is set by VDOT. There's a very detailed formula that the cities have to follow. And that, my company doesn't get involved in yellow light timing. That's all set by VDOT. And then we're also mandated to have a one-half-second amnesty period. So once, if you're driving, for example, and you enter the intersection, the light's amber, no problem. You're not going to get a ticket. In Virginia, if it's red and it's the first half-second of the red cycle, you're also not going to get a ticket. It's a very, very mild enforcement program. If you were to be in Los Angeles and run a red light the exact same way, you would get a criminal penalty, and it would be $500, just under $500. And it would be three points on your license. And they're taking a picture of your face. That doesn't happen in Virginia. It's an extremely mild program. It's $50. You pay it, and that's the entire penalty. We have a number of programs that are in the state right now. And I'll just take you through a couple of slides, and when I hear snoring, I'll stop. So Red Flex is the largest pure-play photo enforcement partner in the world, the USA and the Commonwealth of Virginia. So we're the largest company in the red light camera business. This is all we do. We don't do anything else. We don't get involved in parking programs or automated toll collection. We're just in the red light camera business. We have the largest program in the world, which is the city of Chicago. We also have the largest program on the East Coast, which is the city of Newark. So to put in perspective, the city of Chicago has about 350 operational systems. The city of Newark, in New Jersey, which is where I'm from, has about 40. The largest program in the state of Virginia would be the city of Virginia Beach. Now, these are all Red Flex programs I'm describing. So I'll tell you that in your local area, the cities we have under contract are Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, and Newport News. So if any of you have ever seen one of our cameras or seen a sign there, because the sign is mandated by VDOT, that's one of our programs. The managers of those programs, the three, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, and Newport News, they work the program so carefully and they use it so properly that they have decided, separately from Red Flex, to put their own name on the program, and they call it Photosafe. So whenever you see the name Photosafe in the Hampton Roads area, that's a program that the three cities have put together outside of Red Flex, because they feel the program works better if it's all under one big umbrella. So that's when you see Photosafe. That was all championed by a police officer from the city of Virginia Beach. In the northern part of the state, we have a program in Fairfax. We have a program in Albemarle County. We also have Alexandria, which is also up north. And then we have three new contracts. Shouldn't say Richmond should be down there. But we have the city of Petersburg, which is a new contract. It's under construction right now. We have Isle of Wight County, which is also under construction. And then we have the city of Richmond as well. And we have a bunch more contracts that are coming online in the next couple of months. Now, in Virginia, any city can't just decide they want to go ahead and put cameras in, right? Because it's not designed, it's not a revenue system. It's a safety system. It's designed to change people's behavior, to modify drivers' behavior, and to increase safety, and to increase safety for law enforcement. So this is the legislation. This is what VDOT says. Every city on their list is allowed to have a photo enforcement program based on population. So the population of Portsmouth is under 100,000, as of the last census, I believe. So based on that, Portsmouth is eligible, according to VDOT, for a total of nine intersections. So you could have up to nine intersections that could have photo enforcement. You can't go to 10. You could have one, two, you can go all the way up to nine. Each intersection could have one, two, three, or four cameras. We don't usually overdo it. We don't usually put four at an intersection, usually with a north and southbound or east and westbound pair of cameras. Once these cameras are installed, they're available for law enforcement, aside from the photo enforcement aspect, but they're available for law enforcement to log on and monitor the intersections. And the cameras can be monitored from any, anyone that the police chief authorizes. So you go to a website, there's no special hardware, there's no special software. You log on, and you can see each one of the cameras. So if there was a crash, for example, the chief could then go back and rewind the video and say, okay, let's see what happened when this crash occurred an hour ago. Maybe we could find the vehicle that caused the crash. So it's a great tool that's provided to law enforcement to watch the cameras both live and playback. When we come to a new city, we do this, this is what we do in every city we operate in, but it's also, according to the legislation of Virginia, we do public outreach. So this is an example. That's Mayor Cory Booker from Newark. This is when we turned the Newark program on. So he's very happy with the program. They have over 40 cameras in that city, and we've been operating there for several years. That's one of our larger programs. But we've done public outreach there. We help craft press releases, and we do public relations, and we help you create handouts, and we take on all the expense of this. So the city doesn't have to worry about this. But we don't ever want the citizenry to feel that these things are just being put up and they're just being ambushed. These cameras are at intersections. It's publicized. It'll be on your website. There's signs before each intersection, all four approaches to the intersection. So even if you only have a northbound and southbound camera, we're going to put signs at all four sides of the intersection so that everyone is very well aware of it. In addition, once the program is turned on, we go through a 30-day warning period. So for the first 30 days, we turn the camera on, and law enforcement gets to kind of get a feel for how it operates, and we just issue warnings. And then we, that lets us test the system, make sure it's working properly, and then it lets the citizenry be aware. Because you know, over Sunday night dinner, someone's going to say, hey, I got this warning notice in the mail. And now five more people are going to know about it. So the warning period is, it's mandated, but it's also a really valuable part of the program. If anyone has any questions, by the way, as we go, feel free to interrupt me. Shoot a hand up. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. So another misconception people have about red light cameras is that there's a private company that's doing law enforcement in your city, and that's really not what happens. What happens is our camera equipment captures the evidence of someone violating the law. We have the camera. It's calibrated. It's watching the intersection. And when we feel that there's been a violation, we then hand that information over to law enforcement. So the police chief or his designee is going to log on in the morning to a special website that's protected, and it's got all types of encryption on it. They'll log on and look at the first incident, and they go, okay, the light was red for three seconds. That's documented here, and I'll show you a picture of that. And then you can watch a picture of the car before it runs the red light, a picture of the car with the light red in the intersection, and then you can click and play the video. So a police officer can sit and watch the video, and he'll see the car come up to the intersection. The light will be red. It'll go through the light. And then he makes a law enforcement decision. We don't make those calls. So the police officer will hit either accept or reject. So if it's, for example, a funeral procession, his instructions may be, we're not going to give tickets to people running red lights for funeral processions, so we're going to hit reject. Or he may look, it may be a fire truck responding to a call. Obviously, we're not going to take in a fire truck responding to a call. We would reject that. But if law enforcement looks it over, he's going to go ahead and issue the violation if he feels it's appropriate. Now, keep in mind that the violation is $50. If, imagine you're running a red light and you get a ticket in the mail a week later, or 10 days is the maximum allowed by Virginia law. You get a $50 ticket in the mail. If you had not gotten that ticket in the mail, but if you had been seen by a law enforcement officer, it wouldn't be a $50 fine. It would be, in Virginia, a $100 fine, and I think three points on your license. So again, it's much more mild, it's a much more mild program than if you were to get a ticket by law enforcement. But again, the tickets only come when they're authorized by the chief or his designee. The cameras look basically like this. If you travel through Virginia Beach or Newport News, this is what they look like. They can be different colors. If the city wants to preserve the, you know, the older part of the town, we're happy to make them in any color you want. We're happy to work with you. In the city of Newark, in the downtown area, the mayor liked that the fact that streetlights had fluted bases. So we went out and we put fluted bases on the bottom of the camera poles, and this way it matched the traffic lights. And then again, you see, that's one of the cameras in the middle, and that's one of the typical signs we'll put on the intersection. This is the log-on screen. This is where you can log on. Police will then have access to Smart Scene Live, which is where you can see the cameras live or on playback, in case you had to do a crash investigation. You can go into Super Screen, in case a citizen calls up and goes, hey, this is my name, and I saw a flash. Do you think I got a ticket? Law enforcement can look that up. And then there's violation authorization there as well. And this is basically what the violation authorization screen looks like. Police officer logs on in the morning. He sees the list of the violations, and he goes through one after another. And then you get a picture of the car, like I said, before the intersection. In this case, you see the light is red. You see the painted stop bar, and the car is on the nonviolation side of the stop bar. The light's been red for a second, a second and a quarter. And then in the next scene, the cars run the red light, and now the light's been red for two and a half seconds. And then, although I don't have it set up here, the police officer can watch a video and then make a call. And he's going to decide, you know, did that person violate the red lighter, didn't he? And then you can get a close-up of the license plate. And then here, you can see the video of what it looks like. And that's just the violation screen. We could, we could set this up so that when someone gets the violation notice, what happens is they look at the violation notice, and they have a couple of choices. You could look at it and go, yeah, that's me. I did it. You know, you can, you see the pictures. You see the same pictures law enforcement sees. And then you can go to a website, photo notice dot com, and you put in the citation number and your license plate, and then you can go and review the same evidence the police officer sees. In the state of Virginia, when people do that, and they go on the website and they see the evidence, they usually go ahead and pay it right away. And you could pay it right on the website. Or you could say, you know what? Yeah, the car went through the red light, but I wasn't driving it. You can go ahead and nominate who the driver was. You could say, it was my brother-in-law. He had the car. That'll make Thanksgiving dinner even better. The third choice is, of course, you can go to court, and we'll set that up for you. So we'll have, you know, one night a week, one night a month, or however you want to set it up, that they can go to court. If they want to pay it, we could also set it up so it gets paid directly on the, on the city's website. Or you could just have a link on your website that goes to the photo notice website so they can pay it. We also have a call center. Our operators are open 24/7. We speak English and Spanish and a couple other different languages. They're very helpful at explaining it to people. I've sat in the call center and I've listened in on calls, because I always kind of wondered how people are when they call up. And for the most part, people say, okay, now I understand. You know, it was me, and they go ahead and pay the violation, and that's the end of it. This is what I mentioned earlier. This is called Smart Scene Live. And this is really just for law enforcement use, but it's this feature that lets law enforcement log on to these cameras. So forget issuing red light tickets for a second, but once the program is in place, law enforcement can log on and see all the cameras live 24/7. They could do it from dispatch. They could just put a big TV up on the wall and watch the intersections live. Or if you have a police officer, lieutenant, on the far side of the city, and he hears there was a crash, he could quickly log on and see it from his police car. It's a very useful feature. If you decided that you didn't want to do photo enforcement, you just wanted the cameras, this would probably cost $100,000 a camera. It's a very expensive system. But because it's already built into photo enforcement, the city gets to use it at no charge. And that's just another, that's a single screen, and it's in here that you can then go ahead and save a video. You know, in case you have a camera and you catch a criminal committing a different act, you'd be able to save the video, and you'd have that evidence. Okay. So we're getting to near the end. How much does all this cost? So the bottom line is that photo enforcement programs are designed to be as easy to operate as possible. Basically, we work under what's called cost neutrality, which means we guarantee that the program is going to be paid for by the violators. The city at no point has to pay any money to make this program work. The only investment that the city is going to make is that there's going to have to be a law enforcement officer who's going to have to spend some time each day looking up the violations and making a decision if he's going to issue the violation notice or not. Okay? And that probably won't take that much time. In some cities, in the city of Virginia Beach, I think it's two part-time officers do it, and they're overseen by one full-time officer. But because you're only eligible for nine intersections, you know, maybe 18 cameras max, you know, you're not talking about a big investment of manpower, but that's the only expense. The system itself is paid for by the violators. And then beyond, once the system is paid for, there's a revenue component, which the city would end up getting the excess funds once the program is paid for. So I'll just give you a rough example, just in case you're interested. In Albemarle County, which is not a great analogy to Portsmouth, they had a program, they have their program, it's still operating. It's been, at the time, it was operational for eight months. The total revenue that was collected in violations was $88,000. The Red Flex expense was $53,000. And the city surplus was $35,000. So over a four-month period, the city ended up getting a check. Now, we don't really do this as a revenue creator. That's not what it's for. It's a safety program. It's here to modify driver behavior. It's here to increase safety, and it's here to increase police officer safety as well. In Newport News, during the first 12 months of their program, they had six systems, which would represent, I don't know, three intersections. So over 12 months, the system generated $470,000. The Red Flex expense was 282, and at the end of the year, Newport News got a check for $188,000. The system, the program that's probably the closest to Newport News would be Virginia Beach, just in terms of camera counts. Virginia Beach, at the time we did the slide, had 20 systems operational. Over a 24-month period, there was a surplus to the city of $2.2 million. Now, again, this is not, this is not designed for revenue generation. It's a safety program. You know, to whatever extent possible, I would really recommend, and I don't live in Portsmouth, but to whatever extent possible, I would say that whatever surplus the program generates should go back to public safety. You know, it would be great if, at the end of a year, you could say, you know what? We've had the red light cameras. We can prove to you that crashes have come down. We can show you statistics. There are fewer crashes, and with the surplus, we bought all-new bulletproof vests, or we bought a two-way radio system, or we funded a DARE program for junior high school, or we built a playground. It would be great if the proceeds were then targeted in some form to some public safety benefit. If it goes, it's much, the citizenry tends to appreciate that a lot more, that at the end of the year, you could show what the program did for you. The last slide I'm going to show you is the language that was in the contract we have with Newport News. So when Newport News went to RFP, they included language in there, which oddly enough mentions Portsmouth. And what it basically says is, is that at the end of the negotiation, they wanted the terms that they had negotiated to be extended to other cities and other municipalities in Virginia. So one of them is the city of Portsmouth. And this is, this comes directly off of their RFP. So what this basically says is, should the city of Portsmouth choose to go ahead and do this, you wouldn't need to go back to RFP. You'd be able to use the exact same terms that we negotiated with the city of Newport News. And we call that piggybacking. And that avoids the whole RFP process. So are there any questions? Has anyone ever gotten a red light ticket? I did. I got one in DC about a year or two ago.
I experienced the Alexandria system.
That's one of ours.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmembers?
Well, I guess, I guess my question obviously must be some interest from, I guess, enforcement standpoint, chief. Have we already, at this point, identified potential intersections along with the, I guess, the, all the data reference the accidents and what have you?
Each month, as part of our compstat process, the traffic unit puts together the 10 most dangerous intersections where traffic crashes have occurred. If we move this process forward, again, we're, this is only preliminary to come before council and see if there's interest to move it forward. But we would take that data and through Red Flex and VDOT, be able to continue and come up with the actual intersections that we would target to reduce the traffic crashes. A lot more taken a look at and evaluation before we definitely come up and say we're going to go with this intersection versus that intersection right now.
Okay, so we're in that process of doing that?
We look at it from an enforcement, with police officers right now, but if there was interest from council to move this forward through the manager, and we would sit down and do the evaluation process even further.
I think from a safety standpoint, I could certainly support it.
Well, we'll discuss that and get that with the manager and get back with you so you guys can, okay?[1626.41]
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for your time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Right, council members, the next item we have, regards some representatives we have with us this evening from Columbia Gas. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Ennis, who has been with Columbia for a number of years, and go chat a little bit in terms of some of the work that they've been doing. They've been a parent of the community for a number of years. Historically, everyone's probably familiar with the Portsmouth Gas Company, which they acquired some years ago. And it's going to bring you up to speed in terms of a project that they're working on in and around Crawford Bay or Swimming Point area in terms of some remediation. So, Mr. Ennis, welcome.
Thank you, city manager. Eric Wright, Vice Mayor of Whitehurst. You should have received, the clerk should have put something out. I can go over. You're absolutely right. We've actually been in, part of the Portsmouth community as different companies since 1847. So we've been around a while. It was the Portsmouth Gas Company, and then over Commonwealth Gas. And about 156 years ago, there was a plant that began operating, it was a manufactured gas plant. I'm not going to go into how to make natural gas, but it was used through coal tar to create gas that was used to light the city. This is just an example of where it was. It basically operated where now is Port Nelson Park. Over the years, it operated there, and then in 1960 was sold by Portsmouth Gas, demolished and apartments and some properties. These properties were subdivided, and individual homes were put on it, just on the first street going into Swimming Point. Over the last probably 10 years or so, we've been working to remediate the remains of the coal tar. It's not an unusual circumstance. Coal tar, these manufactured gas plants were created and were very progressive at the time as far as a community. If you had a MGP plant, they called it, well, you were considered a very progressive community back in the 1800s and up and through the 1950s. But when we started to look, when Columbia Gas of Virginia and our parent company, NiSor, started to do some investigation, there's something like 1,500, 1,600 of these type of plants across the nation, so we're not alone. We determined that we needed to do something, and we've worked hard with the city, a lot of work with the city parks and that, and we worked to take ownership of this property, remediate the plant, the land, and created the park. Working with, there's naval artifacts and Coast Guard artifacts. We also worked with the community, and there's this strip of land here, we provided green space to the city. Along the waterfront, we created a wetland, which was not there, and that was, it's actually thriving quite well with a lot of birds and different, making it a much better place. The final phase of this, working with the Department of Environmental Quality, and we entered the, what they call is the volunteer remediation program. So we voluntarily entered that in the year 2000, and we had been working with DEQ, and the last phase that we have to do is actually just off the front of Swimming Point area. You have this next map in your packet, but basically what we've done is, we've delineated this whole area. We went out and all these dots that are out there, and you'll have a similar map, we identified the scope and the extent of 156 years ago. And what we identified is we need to go in these areas and on the surface of, the floor of the river, or the bay, anywhere between one and three feet, we're going to go down, take out the tar, put back clean sand, and we've been in discussions with the Elizabeth River Project on some suggestions for the floor, put back in oyster reefs to help with the aquatic life, and we will be doing that in this general area. We've been working with the properties that abut. In fact, today, we met with the Naval Hospital to talk to them about it, the marina owner, and we'll be, the plan is that we filed a permit with the Virginia Marine Resources Commission, which will then provide input from the Coast Guard, the Corps of Engineers, and others, and we're working with the city on a wetlands permit for the area, the wetlands will be involved. And the plan is that we would like to begin construction, or begin remediation of this in October, hopefully be done three to four months. Everything will be done from the water, so there will not be any impact to any of the residents or the roads as far as egress. We will continue with, this is part of our, we wanted to make sure that the community was aware. We will continue to work with the appropriate, the Swimming Point community, the Naval Hospital, the marina, and Old Town area. We've been in conversations with them to just update them. Once we get the permit in place, then we can know the scope of our work. And it actually, the residue, the sediment that we'll find will be offloaded onto a barge, and actually, it goes to Charles City County, where they have the ability to actually put this into like a concrete slurry mix, and it actually goes from there to a landfill. It's all administered and controlled by the Department of Environmental Quality, and we wanted to just make sure that you were aware of this. We're pretty proud of some of the efforts that we've done over the years, the park and the green space and the wetlands, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
What is the remediation process? How much you going to dredge, take out, that type of thing?
Up to three feet. I think it's 25 tons of dirt that we'll take out of the bottom of the river. We'll put back sand, you know, in accordance with the requirements of the Corps, and then some oyster reef so that we can help improve the aquatic life there.
Have you already taken samples here? Did I miss that?
Yes, I'm sorry. The samples were all these dots, and then we went out as far as the blue dots so that we could, we basically wanted to get the, kind of the extent of where and go beyond where we need to drill so that we know, or not drill, but remediate, so that we knew that it was not outside of the area that we want to work.
So every one of these indications are you're going and dredging out three foot of soil or bottom?
Correct. Where the, the one that has the grids, the yellow grids, that's where the actual work will occur. And there'll be a silt fence that'll be put up around it so that we can, as you can imagine, you go down with a clamshell bucket, go down, bring the water up, or bring the mud up, and then put it onto a barge, but so that we don't have any that gets into the, gets away from the area that we're working.
And the impact to the shoreline and the marina there? Absolutely nothing. They won't even know you're there.
Should be, well, they'll know we're there because it'll be very visible, but they should not have any impact. I mean, we're working with proven technology that has been working, the company that's designing some of this has worked, you know, to stabilize near ground zero in New York and other locations, in New York City and Baltimore and all sorts of communities. So these folks do terrific work.
And you say you'll be done in what, three months?
The plan is about three to four months. It just, until we get in and we don't know what weather conditions may come up that might delay, but our intent is that we should be able to be done in October and hopefully be out of there no later than January.
Any questions? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, sir. You? Thank you, Mr. Ennis. And council members, I'll mention too, as Columbia has started this work and has been at it for a while, they've always tended to maintain a pretty neat neighborly policy. So in terms of the residents in the Swimming Point area, this is something that won't be foreign to them. It's something that they will be kept abreast of as well. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Okay, council members, the last thing I have, I'm going to ask Ms. Jones to join us at the table. Newport has a copy in Debra's unit. My clerk has got some public copies too. I wanted to share with you a rendering of what we would call the FY13 management plan in draft form. And as I frame this up very quick, because we want to just kind of highlight some things for you, this document really represents a work plan. When council actually approves its budget, you've got various projects that are in that budget, different assignments that have come from members of council, different policy initiatives that you all have set forward. And what we really try to do is see if we can carve out, when we look at the year, beginning July 1, we try to kind of put in front of us, what are some of those things that we're going to hope to accomplish? Now, everything in here comprehensively won't happen in 12 months. Some things that we do in terms of government service delivery, a little bit bigger than that, but we've tried to really look at it from the perspective of, you know, what actually has authorized funding? You know, what are some of those target things that we've been after to look to do? And granted, it definitely isn't the Alpha Omega of all list of all services to everybody. But we want to take and start this evening by sharing a little bit of this with you and just having a little bit more of a conversation to kind of highlight some of the content that's in here, get some initial feedback. Our ultimate goal is by the time we get around to, say, July 1, that we'll have pretty much ironed out what we're going to look to accomplish this year. Granted, as different things come up during the business year or the fiscal year, there may be additional assignments from council. There may be different changes in laws and regulations that may have us going a different direction, but hopefully, we've captured kind of the bigger picture. The other thing I'll mention too is that administratively, over the last two months now, the administration has actually worked with our department heads to actually establish about four different administrative committees. One deals with administration, finance, and budget. The other one, community and economic development, public safety and transportation. The fourth one is health, human services, and education. And as you look at the document this evening, there are four sections in terms of how our projects break out to actually pertain to those key administrative committees. What my hope is in that is as we get additional direction from council, this becomes that arm internally within the administration that keeps track, that keeps progress in terms of where we are, and to be able to come back to you at least on a quarterly basis to report out and let you know how some of these things are going. So if there aren't any other questions, and I've got Ms. Jones to join us, we don't want to worry with any type of formal presentation this evening. We'll just kind of flip inside, and we've talked about the various committees. And if you would turn with us to page three. Again, I just really want to make sure we get a chance to chat with you in terms of some of the content and more or less get you acclimated and comfortable with the format in terms of how we'll be reporting some of this information. As you can see, the first one that ties to the administration, finance, and budget committee is, you got the project, then you've got a project description, the department or division that actually deals with that, and the staff person. And I'm just going to take one example, the five-year forecast. As you see that, that's something that Carol Swindell, as your new CFO, has come on to start talking about putting together certain financial information that you'll have on an annual basis, that starts to look at some of your financial expenditures and trends with things like revenue over a five-year period going out. And again, it's not our goal this evening to try to kind of touch and run through every project here, but you can see you've got other things, PSRS, FNP retirement plans. You know, again, some of these high-level issues that have hit the council, and you know, you've asked us to constantly monitor and keep track of and work on, you know, what we deal with and how we come up with programs to deal with it, lifecycle costing, some other things on organizational development. You see midway down the compensation study that you'd ask about, you know, for the general wage employees, so you can start to kind of get some of a flavor. I'll go ahead and flip to page four. And again, some of the things that you're recognizing, core services delivery, the last one that we've talked about, website design, some of the marketing initiatives that we have, and that kind of completes the area in terms of the administration piece, finance and budget. The next section on page five begins community and economic development. And again, you see some familiar things, and I'll kind of skip around a little bit. Holiday insight, this is Crawford Connector. The Frederick Boulevard piece, the second one, West Haven. This was the corridor homes that you remember were acquired between PPIC and EDA to create more of a buffer for the development of the IC Norcom site. The move to Portsmouth campaign is something that you're familiar with as one of those ED projects. The Bon Secours is the city center project, and you've got some other ones here too, citywide intersection upgrade, reconstruction of Alexander's Corner, and you've got some stormwater management, downtown space planning. And again, my goal and our goal this evening is just to kind of hit some of the highlights, not walk you through each one of these. You continue on page six.
Before you do that, the Bon Secours, is that a viable project?
I would say in our estimations it is. We had met with some of the Bon Secours officials probably about six weeks ago. It's probably not moving as fast as they were talking about it moving at one point, but they have had some conversation and probably still may have some interest. And if you remember, their initial phase was a medical office building, a first one, and there are still some conversations about making Maryview more the hub of service in addition to some other services.
I think while the vice mayor mentioned that, the mayor made a comment in the Virginia Pilot, if it was accurate, that he didn't view it as a serious project. That certainly wasn't the consensus of council, I don't believe, given the partners in that project, Amada Hoffler, Bob Williams, and Bon Secours. Those are some pretty heavy hitters when it comes to projects. And if anything that they're involved with isn't serious, I'd like, I'd like for the mayor to tell me what is a serious project, because that project could really stand to increase our tax base tremendously once it was fully developed. And obviously, there were some issues referenced ball fields, but I believe the developer had worked closely with the Little Leagues and the citizens over there to remediate most of that. But I'm glad to hear you say that it is, in our estimation as a city, a serious project.
Yes, sir. And the thing that I would add to it, you know, from a staff perspective, when we had that meeting about six weeks ago, we've really talked to Bon Secours about doing some other community service pieces to kind of talk about what services are going on in their whole network, and to be able to use some PCTV time slots to talk about some of the improved services in Portsmouth. And we had a real good conversation with them because the project has moved very slow.
Sure.
And it is nowhere near as robust as it was initially proposed. A large part of that, I think, from a Bon Secours perspective is the economy, which is the central theme of what impacts the whole United States and the world at this point, is the economy. But it was decent to hear at this point that incrementally, they still will have some interest, again, not as robust. I don't know if we'll see the apartment complex phase and structured parking, you know, in the next two years or anything of that nature. But we built, again, a platform at least to do some public service announcements. Again, if they're recognizing that Maryview's a big major provider of service for them in the future, then for Portsmouth residents, it's important to kind of talk about what you're doing in Portsmouth now. You talk about what's abroad as well. I mean, that's fine.
Sure.
But for us to use our PCTV resources to kind of hone in a little bit more.
Maybe at the appropriate time, it would be good to get an update from Bon Secours, Representative Bob Williams, or perhaps even Representative Amada Hoffler, to let us know, given the state of the economy and the enthusiasm that it was kicked off with a couple of years ago, where we stand, where we going? And probably more importantly, to communicate that we still view it as a serious project and a project that has potential for the city.
I think we need to do some fence mending, make sure all of our partners on the right page, get the mail on the right page.
I think that's a good idea.
And that's what's good about this management plan, because it allows us to keep our hands and our focus on all of these projects and to make sure that none of them get away from us.
Absolutely. That's a good point.
Again, I want to labor a whole lot of council's time. Page eight, again, just hitting some of the highlights, health, human services, and education. You see some familiar pieces here, downtown branch, library, lightship preservation plan, Paradise Creek Park, some of the things that have come up, budget time, some of the things that have come up in the last year, you know, that represent things that have been ongoing. But, you know, the document, again, gives us an opportunity to work it through the administrative committees and, again, keep council abreast on at least a quarterly basis in terms of how things are going, where projects are.
And to Steve's point, I think, is this format is a good reminder of us to look at what we need to be updated on periodically. I just happened to see the Craddock Middle School Recreation Center, and I'm thinking, how's that coming along? So it's a lot of stuff on here that we know about, but we tend to not to revisit the progress as often as we should.
I was talking about Craddock. What are we going to do with all that stuff inside the Craddock through? Is still there?
Can we get through this presentation first?
No, sir. Ask the question.
If we could, Vice Mayor, this document, and this is how we always get unraveled, this document that you're proposing or this plan needs to be looked at, but we want, as you can probably hear, some relevances to how often are these matters going to be brought up to this council so we don't have two years with somebody proposing to do something and then you don't get anything else? That's unacceptable. I mean, we just went through that with this waterfront site, with these Oxford people. We continue to look like we don't know what we're doing or we're not communicating to people. We announce something, and then it dies a slow death or whatever that, so the regularity and how we'll be abreast of these things. I think this is great.
I do too.
And I think we need to bring it up, whatever it is, quarterly or whatever. There's got to be a flag or trip points in here that says, hey, this thing was brought up, the last time we brought this to council was six months ago, eight months ago, and there is no further update. And that would eliminate a whole lot of these other side conversations. So what are you proposing here as far as a time phase of bringing this back to the council and letting us go that?
Sure. Yeah, a couple of things I would mention real quick. Right now, I think it's our goal to bring it to you so you can kind of get accustomed to the format. If we were ready to go live and, you know, had ironed out any bugs that you had If we were ready to go live and, you know, had ironed out any bugs that you have in the next couple of weeks, so we're set to go July 1st, the thought would be to come back probably on a quarterly basis with some type of formal report, a document that kind of gives you a little synopsis on where we are in each of these, if there is something to report. It also puts us in a position, too, where we can share some of the other administrative things that are going on in our committee processes in terms of where the work is going, what you might want to see, what amendments. So probably on a quarterly basis, in a setting like this, where we'd be hitting some of the high-level things, it is possible that we could probably report on a little bit more of a routine basis if it's something in writing that gives you an update. And I want to commit and say right now to monthly, because, again, I think what's important over the next week or two is that you digest this a little bit. And before we come back to next work session, I guess the 24th, 25th or so, that if there's something glaring that we've missed, you know, that you'd like to make sure that we've got in here, you know, then we can make sure that we've captured that. As you can see, it is pretty comprehensive. Council will remember, for the council members who were here in '09, we actually approved a document like this at that time and had more of a committee system that we were looking to implement. So keep in mind, we went back in time, and Ms. Jones extensively worked with departments and kind of interviewed department heads to reconstruct some of the old stuff and also...
But what happened to that since '09?
Some of it's here.
Died a slow death?
No, no, no. Some of it's here, some of it's been done. A large part of the stuff has been done. Remember, some of the criteria, if we think about that for a second, you're literally talking about things that come out of the approved budget that you've got the funding for. Those lofty things that may not have had financing, let me say that, I'll have an example right off the cuff, probably wouldn't be in here, because if there was no funding source for it, then it's not a project that's going to be viable to be achieved in that year's time. So this hopefully bears down to some nitty-gritty stuff. When we look at things like a Bon Secours or anything like that, some of it, you know, isn't all on us. I mean, if there's a city portion, infrastructure, or something that we were supposed to do, that's the part that we're really tracking here in the plan.
I would attach to this, Mr. Chandler, a scorecard to let us know when the last time we were updated on this, too, because you clearly in a quarter's time are not going to go through all this, and I don't think we want to hear all this each quarter. But we do want to phase this and have these updates and have some type of scorecard to make sure we know we've at least checked the box and been up to date on this. Because, again, these are a lot of things, and it should be a moving target, but it does give us some traceability as to where we are with these things, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think this is something good for us to have in case we can look at it also, and if there are some questions about some things that are listed here, we can highlight them and discuss them if need be. This is very helpful for me, like the Vice Mayor just pointed out, the Craddock project. Maybe there are some other things on here that we might need to point out for discussion among us, so that we can be reminded that this is still before us.
I would suggest...
Mr. Moody, just a moment. It is a very good tool to use, and again, how we utilize that to keep the council updated is what my major concern...
Oh, Mr. Vice Mayor.
You have to stop cutting these people off. You have to stop cutting the council off.
You need to be addressed by the Mayor, sir, to speak, so we can all do this, because people are chiming in like you are.
In fact, he was rude earlier.
So we got a good point. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And it is rude to cut people off. I think this is a great report. I agree with Councilman Edmonds. I think it begs two more columns. One is the frequency of the update and the column that you mentioned, the date of the last, most recent update. I think if we get those two columns, it would allow us to do a better job of tracking the progress or lack thereof of each of them.
Mr. Vice Mayor, did you have something to add?
I do. There's items, for example, we've not talked about, for example, today, you sort of close the door when members of council want to talk about the red light, you cut them off. I think you need to listen to what...
Vice Mayor, let's finish this, and then we'll get back to that.
Sir, I have the floor, sir. If a member of council wants to discuss something, you shouldn't cut them off. Let them talk what they want to say, when they're talking about it.
Especially on an important subject like that one.
There are some items that's not on this list, like the cemeteries that we were talking about, we're about ready to run out of cemetery space in Portsmouth. The city attorney has done a great job in bringing back what we call Fish's Hill. A person gave us some land. We need to look at that land and try to decide, can we make it into a cemetery and provide burial space for people that died? It's going to happen. Both black and white cemeteries are almost like a dinosaur, they're gone, almost. The same thing about the Church and Bridge, is that on here? Is that on here?
We didn't get to the section, Vice Mayor, on public safety, but on page nine, you look at the top, sir. Our replacement church and bridge.
That's why I said a lot of items are...
We were going to cross that bridge when we got to it, I believe.
Good one.
So if we could, is it a good plan for us to look at this and get feedback to you of items that we might see, like the Vice Mayor just mentioned, that are not up here, to make sure that we're all comfortable with these? Because, again, this is going to be a moving target. It should be. I mean, it should be dynamic and changing, and as we see things, we ought to be on a quarterly basis, get you to add things there. So, no, actually, I like this a lot, Mr. Chandler.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor, we'll make a notation on the cemeteries piece, because we can put together a blurb on that. I think what's important is, as you've mentioned, there'll be some other things, I really hope, and I mean, there can be as much as you need, but hopefully, over the last couple of years budget-wise, we've really nailed down quite a few of the big things that you'd be looking for. So if we have and if we haven't, y'all will be able to let us know, we'll be able to fine-tune it and, you know, get back to you. Probably your meeting 24th, 25th, we'll probably have a little bit more of a cursory formal presentation in terms of the final document. And, again, we understand it's a work in progress. Things will be altered during the plan year, and we understand all of that.
This is good.
Hopefully, this kind of puts us on a working sheet of paper of what we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, there'll be those things that come from the floor sometimes that we'll have to address, but hopefully, we got the big picture and the working sheet of music that y'all would want us to work on.
Any other questions or comments about the draft management plan here? Okay. All right, very good job. So about next meeting, maybe we can have a little bit more fine-tuning of this and with those other columns that...
Yeah, I tell you, we'll make the modifications very quickly on that. I mean, we've made a couple of notes. We may be in your ear a little bit and may contact you over the next couple of days as you get a chance to digest this to make sure we're, you know, taking from you, you know, other information you might see. I don't want to put the onus on you to have to worry about getting back with us. Let's go ahead and contact you and make sure we're covering it. Okay? All right, thank you.
Anything else you have there?
That's all we had, sir.
Okay. The only thing I want to address is I wanted to wait till the salesperson had got done there to make sure we discuss this whole red light issue. And I noticed he had some of our neighboring cities that he's already doing work with. Have you contacted any of those city managers to discuss that? Chief, had you contacted any chiefs in other cities?
I've talked to the chiefs and...
What I would like is you to have that conversation and make sure that those things are, as well as he put it, I think he put three cases up there, and all three of them were surpluses, and he mentioned several times this wasn't a revenue generator. So I wanted just to make sure, in my view, that you converse with the other city managers and make sure that there isn't something that we go down this road and wind up there's some other costs or some things that may not, so...
And I was going to mention, if I may, I've only got one copy of some supplemental information that we have from this gentleman this evening, and we'll make it a point to get some additional information for council. You know, our real goal tonight is, Chief Hargis had mentioned, let's chat with council first, and if there is some interest in pursuing additional information. And it sounds like we've kind of got...
I think there's some interest there. I just didn't want to make sure that we said go without you collaborating with our sister cities, because it's good to have folks that's already doing it and making sure that all of those things are working, like you said, because I am in favor of that, but I want to make sure we got that. Mr. Moody?
Well, to that point, and I don't think anybody was asking for, or we weren't getting ready to pull a switch to implement it, but at public work sessions, we all know at the formal meetings, we can't have conversations, pretty much. Those meetings aren't the place to discuss remedies, offer suggestions, for the most part. Public work sessions are. So I think, Mayor, it's very important to let discussion, everybody at this table have an opportunity to partake in discussion, offer their suggestions, their opinions, whatever, without cutting them off. You know, let them say their piece, because the public is probably aware, this is really the only chance we get to meet as a council and to do that.
Well said.
So it needs to be encouraged, not cut off or limited. Just keep that in mind, because that's extremely important.
Well said.
And it's important for the manager and his people to hear what council is thinking. And they can glean a lot from just our conversation without us having to do a consensus or anything. I think it gives them some good input that they don't get at these formal meetings.
I would disagree with any of the things that you just said. Good. All right, any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Whitehurst.
I'll bring it up again through somebody's negligence, I guess, starting on the school side. The Craddock High School, it's almost as though people closed the door and left what was in there, in there, we're not going to put this in this school. That was 10, 15 years ago. Whenever a school was closed, they walked out. We took possession of the school, I'm assuming. We didn't count, we didn't take any effort to protect the material. People, robbers, filthers, went in and took whatever they wanted to take, forked into school, took out some of the equipment that they could take out and sell it. It's still there. It's an eyesore. I asked, what are we going to do? My suggestion was, there are people and former members of Craddock High School that would love to have anything that was once Craddock. They were willing to be willing to accept the material, find a way of auctioning it, selling it, cutting it up, do whatever it is to the members of the Craddock, former Craddock High School. I suggested we get rid of it by selling it to this group for a dollar, let them get whatever permits they need to get, whatever assurance they need to get, whatever, everything they need to get, and end up giving us a brand-new, not a brand-new, a school that's clean. And I brought it up, we didn't discuss it. I still think we need to do something now. It's sitting there with all that stuff that's in there that shouldn't be there. All we need to do, we need to... The manager's waiting for us. He shouldn't have to wait for us, it's really a day-to-day operation. He's waiting for us to tell him what to do, and four people are to step up to the plate and say, do something. Now, it's still sitting there.
Let me ask you, have we ever discussed that in a formal setting meeting and requested you to do something, the reason why you're waiting on us? Have you ever seen in a meeting?
There's been some conversation with some council members. I know Vice Mayor Whitehurst has really been interested in pursuing this and mentioned that he would, you know, talk with council members about it. Let me mention, process-wise, with facilities like this, in most localities, when you have a school facility, when it's obsolete or no longer in use, the property reverts back to the governing body. You've really got a couple of options. You can market the property for sale or for development, which is very similar to what you've done in this instance, whereas at a certain point that it turns over to a developer, the wares that are still in the facility, as long as there's nothing hazardous or what have you, actually transfers over with the property to the developer. Then there's the other avenue of what you're talking about here. So, I mean, if you look at the short history of this, I think when it was originally discussed or, you know, got some media attention behind it, there was some public concern, has been waiting for a long time, not necessarily, unless you said at the point that it turned over, and the council a couple of years ago did say, we want to market various properties that we have for economic development. However, there wasn't a push at that time, and then probably not up until this time, to say, the contents within a facility, we'd like to see what we may be able to do with that, because the norm would be that it's going to revert to the developer, and the developer at a certain point may have the authority to sell it, do whatever, dispose of it. So there are some options there. The part that we would be waiting for is if council does have a desire, right now, while it's still in the possession of the city, even at this point, to do something different with the wares inside, other than transferring over to a developer, you know, we can look and consider what options that you would have. You know, but that's something that you all would have to decide upon. You know, we can get into things like hold harmless agreements. It is a little bit dicey when we had all these tours going through, and the general public is in there, because you don't have hold harmless agreements. If anybody gets injured, we, the city, are liable, you know, for the medical and everything else associated with that. So, again...
How was that whole thing conducted? How did you and the public and all these folks get in there, and the television station got in there, and half of us didn't? How did that come about? Somebody can share?
Probably the same way the homeless people have been sleeping in there, they've walked through the door.
Sheriff took you, you and the public and the television station in? Is that what...
I had heard and brought the city attention of the school system and this council, that I had heard a rumor there were hundreds and hundreds of chairs and tables in that building. This body did nothing. I talked to the intended developer and said, I understand that's there. He said, yes. Can I go see it? Yes. I went in and saw it. I reported it to this body also that was by video. It did nothing. I'm asking that we do something with the content of that school now and do it quickly. So I think what the manager's given us is a great tool. I think we have something right now, we need to do something with it now. That's the content, what's in that school now, we need to do something with it.
Yes, I'll get you in a minute. I think my point here, Mr. Whitehurst, is I don't think we've ever in a public work session had this discussion.
You didn't bring it up.
And if we don't discuss these in this matter, I don't want anyone here thinking that if you send an email to another council person, that that constitutes that we're not taking action. We have two of these meetings a month, on a Monday and a Tuesday, so there's actually four opportunities in a month's time. And to hold us responsible for reacting to an email that you would send or pictures that you and the sheriff or Channel 10 or whoever go and take...
Mr. Mayor...
Let me finish, sir.
You are so wrong.
For the record, it needs to be brought to this table so we can respond. So I don't know of any meeting that we've had here and a public work session that discussed this matter. And that was the crux of my question. We want to be able to do exactly what Mr. Moody said, that is, the purpose of these work sessions, to be able to bring these things out, to discuss it, and give the manager some kind of direction. And to say we have been acting on it when, I don't know, has anybody here, do we have anything on the record, Madam Clerk? No, we have not discussed that in this manner, so...
I can show you, Mayor, I sent an email that was distributed to all of you asking us to do that, and you wouldn't bring it on the table.
Okay. All right, Mr. Moody?
What y'all are talking about just reminded me of something else. I'll bring that up, one more second. All right, I'm going to... Having walked through the school with the Vice Mayor and the developer, there's probably some things in there that are of value to some people, chairs, tables, et cetera. Getting those things out would be a cost. I think getting access to them, in some cases, by the general public, unless you have a hold harmless agreement, would be certainly risky. We had to climb over a lot of stuff. It's not a safe environment, to say the least. I would suggest that we get somebody in the salvage business to maybe look at the kitchen. There's certainly some things in there that may still be of value. I think the value part of that was probably 12 years ago when they closed the school. I know the sheriff got the automobile lift out of there that had certainly value to it. I guess he's using it somewhere. But at this point, I think the manager's right, usually someone buys that building, the developer buys it, usually the contents go with the building, at least if the owner wants that to occur. I would suggest meeting with maybe the developer and somebody who's an expert in that sort of salvage products to render in a professional opinion on whether it's worth salvaging or not before we expend, we might expend more money than the stuff is worth, quite frankly.
Quite right.
Go ahead, sir.
Oh, I was going to get into my...
Well, that's a valid point, what you're saying there, that we may need to charge the manager to take that approach and look at it before we jump off and decide to do one thing or another. But back to my original point about the whole harmless piece, if we, the council, are inviting the... the public in an area that someone gets hurt, we are liable, and I'm still concerned as to who opened that facility and how did members of council and the public go in and view that, because you just said it was dark, you were stepping over things. That should not occur, and if it does, and it's someone on this council and the city's there, we are opening ourselves up for liability. So, I'm concerned that that whole event took place, and there were people that actually went in there with y'all to view that. That is a serious offense.
The only people that went in there was the developer, myself, and Councilman Whitehurst, and maybe his partner. He had a key to the facility, Mayor, so I take it that he got...
But you had nobody from, no other people from the public, all of these folks that sent emails and interviewed on Channel 10 that they went in there?
Channel 10 wasn't...
Y'all didn't, not with y'all. Okay. All right. Just as long as it's not something that's sanctioned by this city, because we are liable if we do it. If the developer does that or somebody else, then that takes us off the hook, but I just... Your second point, sir?
My second point is, the Vice Mayor is asking, and you're asking, did we bring this subject up at a previous work session? Well, you know, when I got on council 14 years ago, work sessions, very often, did we come to a consensus on anything? There were more just info-sharing sessions and conversations about things. In the last few years, that has changed. Very frequently, someone asks for consensus on a specific item, and what happens, we come back and we don't remember exactly what that consensus was, or maybe someone adds items to that consensus that weren't there originally. They come back with a laundry list saying, yeah, we approved that two public work sessions ago, and I'm just using this as an example.
That's a good example.
And to get to my point, Mayor, I would like for us to look at, don't have to make the decision tonight, but to look at taking minutes of these meetings. I think we're to the point where we're discussing enough business, and people periodically, either the manager needs a consensus from us, but we need to identify the business that we're conducting. Right now, we have no idea what that is. We depend on our memories. That, depending on the subject, can get foggy, or we depend on asking Deborah, hey, Deborah, do you recall this? We just got so much going on now that we need to take minutes of these things, I feel.
I think we can discuss that, because, again, I think another part of the confusion, like I say, we get emails coming every day with certain council people wanting to discuss things, not in this format, but in that format, and then confusing the fact that we're not making or taking action on something that that council person has emailed, and maybe someone else has responded, and the rest of us haven't, so we assume that the council is not interested, or this matter is not being looked at, or the manager owes us an answer, or we owe him an answer, and I just don't think that is the format or the place to be able to give him those type of directives. Again, meeting four times a month in a work session setting, we have an opportunity to be able to bring those things in and to make sure that we're clear on that. So, that's where a lot of this is. The Vice Mayor keeps making reference to a lot of things that I've seen on an email that no one else has either responded to or one or two people have. Mr. DeHartik?
I was just going to say, Mayor, in response to Mr. Moody's point, I think one of the great benefits that this council has over some of our neighboring localities is we videotape this.
Everything.
So, quite apart from needing to take minutes, I know that a couple of times, I've had to go back and look at conversations that were recorded, and they're online for everyone to see, just to sort of, you know, refresh my mind in terms of what was or was not discussed. And I think that's one of the great strengths that we have over some of our neighboring localities, because everybody gets to see this, and it's all there so that, you know, we can remind one another about what was discussed or not discussed, and I, again, just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Well, that's good, but we need to, we need to access things at times faster than relooking through a video of a meeting. You know, that's more for the public that's not here at these meetings to look at. These are professional meetings. We have conversation. Once again, we come, we take action at times now, and that needs to be documented in minutes so we don't have these back-and-forth discussions like is happening on this Craddock situation, you know, you did, no, I did, or they did, that sort of thing.
I think Mr. Edmonds was handling it first, and I'd like to be after him, though.
Thank you. First of all, Mayor, I'd just like to say, we ought to sell the building and all the contents in it to whoever buys it. Secondly, I take notes, and then, before I come to the meeting, I look at some of the broadcasts to make sure that if there's an issue that I need to ask a question to, I do. But most of the time, when we're discussing items, sometime other items interject, and it kind of gets blown out of proportion, and we never come to a conclusion sometime on some items that we need to come to conclusion on. And I think we ought to be more pointed when we do say that there's a consensus, to make sure that we know that all of us agree. That's what a consensus is all about, before we leave without any problems. Didn't you consent? We ought to know when we leave here who consents and who doesn't. Thank you.
What I was going to say is, you know, we are the board directors for a half a billion-dollar business here, and there are things that happen on a daily basis, and to wait two weeks to talk to someone about something to our next work session, if something happens on Wednesday, I don't want to wait till the 25th for our next meeting to talk about it. So, if someone sends an email or makes a phone call, I think that's fine. We ought to be responsive, but what the problem is, there's some people who only respond to some people's emails. Some people don't respond to anything. So, to put off something for two weeks, you know, in this business that we're in, that's too long. We can't let people's business sit out there and hang out there for two weeks till we get together again and come in here and run the possibility, but not even getting to get your piece out, just to say your piece and getting cut off. So, I find that, that doesn't work for me. We need to be better communicators, and we respond to each other, and return each other's phone calls and respond to each other's emails, even if you respond to email with a phone call. If you don't want to an email, fine, but respond to email with a phone call, so at least the individual will know you took the time to read it, you have a response, but not wait two weeks, because that's too long. We're doing the people's business, not our personal business.
The point there that I was making is, we've got a city manager there, and if there's anything that's urgent, he is our chief executive, and if there's something that he needs us to approve, he normally calls and gets that through to us. We're talking about things that someone thinks is a great idea, and trying to get other people to say it's a great idea on an email without bringing it to the table. Any urgent things are handled by our manager. That's why we have a manager, and if that manager does that, he normally gives us a phone call and calls each one of us on something that needs urgent attention, which is very rare. So, I don't want to confuse that with going in the crowd. Well, sure, he gets his answers, though.
And some of us respond and some of us don't. I'm just saying, it's a common courtesy to your colleague to respond.
To all the emails. Okay.
I mean, you know, somehow or another, some of these things you may find renewed, but some of them are important, and to not respond to any of them, as you usually dump, I think is disrespectful to the rest of us.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
I think Page probably said what I was going to say. I think it's a common courtesy, professional courtesy. You know, each of us has a BlackBerry or some type of device that the public is paying for, and that is conduct business. When we're not meeting, it's a communication device. I haven't seen anybody since I've been on council that sends jokes or anything of that sort. Usually, when they're emailing something, then, yeah, sometimes I think, ah, that's incredulous, but I'll weigh in on it as a courtesy. And important stuff, the manager, yeah, he calls us, and that's fine, but there was an issue that came up over the weekend with the youth association, and I'm not going to go into the details, but that was important to that citizen, important to the kids, and I made, I took the call. I made people aware of it, and it seems like the same people respond to things. For some reason, we got a few members of this council that feel either they're above that, or they don't want a paper trail of what they are going to weigh in on, of what the deal is, but it's rude, it's not professional, and it shows a lack of courtesy, quite frankly.
Vice Mayor?
Back to the Craddock issue. I'd like to have someone go look at the floor of the building. It has information that I think may include social security numbers, which I think is unlawful. It's to be cleaned before you turn it over to anybody.
Yeah, there were attendance records and...
All kinds of names of kids and people. You better go do that before you start giving it away.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's apparent that before any school closes, that the school board will send people into it to get rid of information. Case in point, I see Norcom when it was closed, things that were not useful stayed there, and things that were, they know the ethical things to do, to take out social security numbers and folders. They know that. But as far as these other things that are in there, to go into a building like that, we need to make sure that that building is completely secure, with plenty of no trespassing signs on it, and anybody that's trespassing will be arrested.
Have we had any interface, Mr. Manager, with the school system about those matters, or what's there and what they've looked at? Because I think from the TV piece, they did mention that the superintendent said he was sending somebody in there to look, so I don't know where that is.
No, yes, sir, and I'm not sure what the outcome of that was. It was really to go in and look at some of the files and the records. I really don't know at this point what the disposition was. Was there something that they found that was record-worthy that they removed or felt needed to be destroyed? You know, prior conversation here, I don't have any problems following up to ask that question.
Could you do that, get with him and kind of resolve that matter there, and then this other piece with whether or not we have a yard sale or give it to someone? I'm not opposed to any of that. What I want to make sure is, whatever we do, we have and afford the same opportunities to anyone else in the city that want to do something like that. When we normally make these kind of decisions, go give it to somebody for a dollar, somebody else is going to show up, and we're not going to do that, and we're going to be discriminating. So, that's always the basis from where I look at things, not that if it's a good idea or it's a great group or a bad idea. So, I want to make sure we're not doing something that would open ourselves up to someone in the future coming, not saying it's a bad idea, Mr. Whitehurst.
Mayor, when have we done it before?
I don't know. I'm just saying, you open yourself up to legal cases and other matters when we're doing something. I mean, I don't know what, do you have an opinion now on whether that attorney, whether it's a great idea for us to let people go into that building and buy stuff or give it to somebody else?
Right now, I don't have an opinion on it. It doesn't seem, if you all come to some kind of consensus of what you want to do, we'd be happy to evaluate whether or not it's legal, but it...
So, can we look into that matter, Mr. Manager, and then maybe we'll get, make sure we legally can do whatever it is we want to do, and whatever that is, if it is giving it over to some group or some organization that...
That's fine, and what I've gleaned from several of the comments that you all have made on this subject this evening would be a couple of points. Number one, we will go ahead and make sure we contact and assess the record situation. Is there anything that's salvaged that should be removed or destroyed? That'd be number one. Number two, if there is some aspect of a salvage dealer or anybody of that nature, not sure who, but we will work to see if we can get in contact with someone to be able to go in with staff to take a look around, because there's some key points that you've mentioned here. Councilman Moody's mentioned kind of the struggle that you might have to actually be able to get to things. That's going to be a key evaluation factor as to whether or not you're going to be talking to the city attorney's office for any type of hold harmless agreement. You know, if the conditions are such that they don't warrant people being in there, and they've got to climb over stuff, you're going to be right where Dr. Edmonds was to say, let the wares go with the building and let the developer in the future worry with that. So, if you're comfortable, we'll check out those three things and collaborate with legal, the law department, you know, and get back with you on an answer.
Very good. Any other comments? Anybody else on that? Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.